Thank you for your mercy and your grace and your blessings upon our nation, our state, and our county. Bless the proceedings today, Lord, and they will go as they should, fairly and of benefit to all the citizens of this county. We thank you, we pray to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will call our November 6th County Commissioner meeting to order. And the first thing on our agenda today will be the approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Miss, as you have before you, October 2nd minutes. Are there any corrections on those minutes?
Commissioner Jordan, I think under the approval of amendments on page 1, 3, 2, 1, I believe it was Commissioner Hopple who made a motion to amend instead of Commissioner Owens about Deppelbaum's name.
Yes, it was you.
Okay, what page is that?
The first page.
Okay.
And under delegations, it should be Dan Wang, not Dan Wayne.
Do we have that? Any others? Under delegations, under my copy, the last sentence seems to have something left out. Did he ask that the board weigh heavily on the what?
What page is that?
Page 13, 21.
13, 21, I'm sorry.
Under delegation, unannounced. It just cuts off the middle of it.
Which one, 22, would I say?
The last one.
We got that. Also, under delegations, announced, did that general staff correct, 7, 8, 3, 0, 2? That doesn't look like a bill stat.
I believe that's what the gentleman may have said. We can check it, see.
Okay.
There may have been some confusion at the place. Mr. Chairman, I think that making maiden speaking to the right there at the end, and I think in this closing, we went back to what the citizens of you were wanting. And I think that's what you probably would find should go to. He asked that the board weigh heavily on the opinions of the Ual community. I think that's what you're finding.
Are there any other corrections? All right, if there are no other corrections, we're going to take a motion to accept the minutes as modified.
So moved.
Side.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The next item would be our agenda. We have your agenda before you. I believe we're going to try to go through it as presented. We're going to take a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Side.
Motion's second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the next item on our agenda would be our delegations, unannounced delegations, citizens comments. Do we have any? All right, Mr. Don Field.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, county manager, county commissioners, how are you all doing this morning?
Aye.
Good, good. I wanted to talk to you about a couple things here. One concerning the four items. The first thing, the Northeast Commission. It has been brought to our attention that the Northeast Commission, this is a commission that gets together to talk about the cultural, the financial benefits within North Carolina. This is a group, one representative, if you will, from each county. Mr. Mendenhall's name was mentioned and submitted to that commission. And until recently, I personally was blocking this appointment. And the reason being is last year during the overhaul, I called for the resignation of the last county manager, Toby Chapel. And it was felt that there was abuse of privileges. And Mr. Mendenhall, I personally wanted to come to you publicly, we spoke privately, but I publicly wanted to say this, that I personally am apologetic, I'm sorry, and I think a good leader recognizes when they make a mistake. And for that, I publicly want to announce to you that I'm sorry. After delegations with the fellow Republicans here within the county of last month, it was unanimously voted that we would let his nomination go through after speaking with him privately. And we support, after our conversation privately, we know where your heart is, it is within the county, and we recognize that, and we publicly support that. So that being said, let me move on. On June 5th, I also put out a challenge to Mr. Owens and to Mr. Jernigan. Mr. Jernigan and I had a wonderful lunch over some cheeseburgers within the county here, and we spoke about county business. It is going to take money to fix up the old county courthouse. And so you have to find ways to create money. With the jail system that we have here in the county, it is an option that we use that within the county for our own prisoners, for use. It doesn't have to be per se a jail, but we can perhaps use it within our own county. And that's something that we can look forward to. Of course, nothing's written in stone, and Mr. Jernigan, we will be submitting to you a resolution soon dealing with our recommendations with that. The third item that I'd like to speak of today is parliamentary procedure. Dealing with minutes being done with the committees within the county. It has been said before that minutes were made private, or the procedures for a secondary motion would not be allowed to be given. The correct way of parliamentary procedure is that, one, all minutes is public. All minutes are public. Anything dealing with the county, anything dealing with the state, anything dealing with the federal government, anything signed off by a judge is public record. You have a right to know. If you don't have that knowledge, and you want it, please see your county manager, see your representative, see your congress, your senator. These are supposed to be made very public, first off. As far as the procedure itself, when one makes a motion, that parliamentary president over that committee should call for a second. If there is an amendment given to it, that amendment needs to be addressed. If there is an amendment to the amendment, that needs to be addressed. Everything in good order. Last, but not least. You had a gentleman come up here and make a presentation to you all. Gave you documentation with Sidney Pierce III. Gave you documentation, gave you a plan. Rather you agree or disagree with that plan, that's up to you. However, what happened afterwards was completely disgusting. I was appalled. I'm sitting there in my office, and I'm watching the videotape of the county commissioner's meeting. And it's very public knowledge that a gentleman, a young man by the name of Earl Brown Tree, got up here at this very podium, took a piece of paper, and threw it into the audience. Is this how we treat Republicans? Is this how we treat our citizens? I'm absolutely appalled. And I'm appalled that you all allowed it to happen. There was no public rebuke to this. There was no correction. It was almost like a child with a temper tantrum. Shame on him for doing it, but shame on you all for allowing it to happen. It was mentioned after that about minorities. He played the race card. Mr. Jordan, you and I, sir, are both part of the NAACP, and I have been for probably about 15 years actively, probably for probably about a year, year and a half. And you, sir, never corrected him, and he was an open supporter of you and the software. I hope that you all do not allow us to represent you all, because this was not a good representation. I'm asking that you all publicly rebuke this type of behavior, and that in the future, that you all do not allow this to happen. This was not representing you all well. I'm here for any comments, concerns, or questions.
All right, we thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We have a procedure that if there's a disruption of county commissioner meetings, the chairman has the authority to bring the meeting under control. I will say that if that action did disrupt a meeting, certainly we would have taken action. Mr. Brown Tree, I believe supports whoever he desires, whether it's Republican, Democrats, or independents. I don't believe they have any relevance to what we're doing. Any other comments? All right, the next item on our agenda will be our announced delegations, Mr. Jeff Beal Maverick, NCFAST.
Board of Commissioner, County Manager, citizens of Gates County would like to thank you for allowing my department, the Gates County Department of Social Services, to come and give a brief update on some of the changes that we will be seeing as it relates to automation, and also as it relates to some slight variances that the Affordable Care Act is bringing our agency to determine eligibility for some of our programs. Do all the county commissioners have a, and would you like one of you to make those on?
I've got one.
We'll get started. The brief introduction to the Affordable Care Act, everyone knows, that was passed will include some provisions that will impact how we determine eligibility for our medical assistance programs made in Medicaid. It's anticipated that this will affect a number of customers coming into our Department of Social Services. NCFAST is a new automated system that is being implemented for all programs at our agency. In August 2012, we began with nutrition services with applications. In January this year, we moved to all other functions there. And just recently in October, we began taking our applications in Medicaid. There's different projects. This is Project 7, which is known as a federally facilitated marketplace interoperability. With the Affordable Care Act, individuals who have been screened through the federally facilitated marketplace as being possibly eligible for Medicaid have to be determined eligible for Medicaid or in Medicaid first, or then continuing in the federally facilitated marketplace. So that is how that affects our agency. Some things we know and we're still learning, with NCFAST, we get multiple emails a day. That's I told others, not in a formal session, but we told our board, is that the information that we get in this system is constantly evolving, constantly changing. We get a postcard every Monday, we have one this week, and I think there was about 15 changes in the thing. So as you can tell, the staff there has a learning curve with this new system, and they're changing the way the business that we've been doing the same way for a number of years. Our legacy systems were from the 1980s, I believe, early 80s, late 70s. So that lets you know about the span that it spans since we've updated our technology. But what we do know is that October 1st, 2013, applicants will be screened for Medicaid, as well as covered under the Affordable Care Act, as we said, will be used and screened by application. It will help determine eligibility. So our applications will change as well from the traditional applications that we take from Medicaid. Also, our caseworkers, as we've said, the overall process is constantly changing, and we constantly receive emails, we constantly change our business practices due to the federal government passing down information, the state, the state implements policies, and then we implement it at a level level. But to let everyone know, we're introducing scan a file line to be designated by a marketplace to be certified application counselor. There's many other roles with the Affordable Care Act, as we've seen, there's navigator, there's certified application counselor, there's community outreach enrollment. We have that information in the newspaper calendar, thank you. We're trying to assume these services in County North Carolina has been somewhat behind other states in disseminating information about where individuals can access these services if they need to access federally facilitated marketplace or in charge further.
Any requirements for that, for our organization, for you, so far?
There was grants that we're giving for navigators, Mr. Owens, and the largest recipient of that was Community Care in North Carolina, and they allowed some recipients to apply for those grants. And when they did award the grant, individuals had to have, I believe, 45 hours of training. There's a certain amount of hours of training that they have to have prior to become certified as an application counselor, community outreach enrollment, or navigator, which has been determined that many people have come associated with the Affordable Care Act. We actually have a navigator in our office once a month, asking individuals to send newspaper information. So we see about 40, only that telephone number will be running the Gates County index throughout the end of the year, probably throughout, when that's the last thing that'll be there. And as we see, some other things we know, cases will be transferred between the federally facilitated marketplace and our NCFAST system. They'll be communicated via interaction. As we know, we will not be taking telephone calls from the federally facilitated marketplace. If you do an application where someone has been flagged, you're possibly getting a term for Medicaid, you have 45 days to process that application to determine whether they're eligible or not, if they are eligible, or even if they're not eligible, that information will go back to the federally facilitated marketplace. That individual can continue as they need. NCFAST, if there's a automated system, majority of applicants, if they can, should be able to be verified electronically through systems that NCFAST interacts with, verify certain aspects, eligibility, I won't go into all those because there are numerous things that have to be verified. As we know now, the state of North Carolina is trying to not participate in Medicaid, so we will not be expanding Medicaid. But as has been in the news lately, everyone can see in regards to qualifying for lower cost health insurance through the federally facilitated marketplace based on size and income, and if you do not qualify for the tax credit or cost share reduction, you have to pay full price. We wanted to let everyone know how this will affect our agency and citizens of the county that come to our agency. Of course, I'm just screening my application, we've already gone over. Since we're screening for two separate types of Medicaid, we're still screening for our traditional Medicaid, but with the Affordable Care Act, our rules of how we determine eligibility also have to be asked as well. We changed our income, we changed how we determine eligibility with some slight income variances with the Affordable Care Act, but that maybe pertains to how a household composition is. Previously, a household composition was based on relationships. Now it's going to be based on tax household. Who are you paying for taxes in your household, so to speak? A quick example is that previously, if you had two individuals who had been previously married, so with their second marriage, and they've had children from the first two marriages, you have step parent and step trooper relationship. On the old system Medicaid, you would have all those individuals within two households, then one household, but you would actually have two households because you could not combine them. Now with the tax household, if all those individuals were claimed in that tax household, you will count that entire household's income as one household. So that's very brief differences of how this eligibility system will work as opposed to traditional Medicaid and how you determine eligibility under the MAGI rules, which is the modified justice press. As we see additional verifications, we talked about that. We talked about other applications that we transferred. We also have medical assistance application that can be completed and submit electronically via e-Pass. So there's many different things that will be affecting DSS as a result of this Project 7 and NCFAST. We expect with this, with the Affordable Care Act, to increase in telephone calls, new person inquiries, new applications, and new cases. We have changed our workers' job responsibilities as it relates to the NCFAST system. We have workers working in multiple programs now, having changes in job responsibilities. So we have sort of that as an event for first. Staff is also having to learn new methodology associated with the MAGI system. We also expect a slight increase in case eligibility to the MAGI rules, approximately 75 more individuals, information than we have, being other one of this new eligibility determination system as opposed to traditional Medicaid. And as we talked about, the income eligibility system will determine us, will help us determine eligibility by tax households instead of household members. And we wanted to stress our entry points, of course, applications can still be paid in person, but we'll also be receiving applications from the federally facilitated marketplace, as well as those individuals who finally pass through NCFAST. So the changes that we see October 1st, free line patients will be completed for all individuals applying for medical assistance, additional questions we talked about. And regardless of entry point, all Medicaid and North Carolina Health Service applications will hopefully be done in Medicaid. Now, we were told on October 1st, this is something that's changed, that all of our Medicaid programs would be eligible to have applications taken, and then on October 1st. Today, the number is 6, you still can apply in all Medicaid applications. As we see, the system is still constantly evolving, and I believe the department's group informed earlier, January 1st, if anyone does new insurance benefits from applying to children, those are going to influence medical assistance programs, will follow new rules from our MAGI, and applicants that do not qualify for Medicaid can still be eligible for this federally determined program. The only future implications we see in the North Department of Social Services is if the state figures to expand Medicaid. What this will do will increase the population eligible for Medicaid by a possible 30% by case load increases, what we would expect. It would also expect some working effect with our new system. Once it's fully operational, applications will be taken, eligibility will be able to determine across numerous public assistance programs. We can see individuals that could find out they're eligible for public assistance programs that they may not be able, may not have known they were able to be eligible for prior. Previously, we had solid programs where one of the five or one program, that's only application to be able with this system. Once you do your application, it can determine eligibility for all of them. And we just want to give some helpful tips to the citizens that come to apply. As we know, applying for special Medicaid and some of our programs, there could be numerous documents that you would need. Please, you can call ahead prior to applying, regardless of needed documents, because we would like, and we'd benefit you as well as our agency, if you had all those needed documents before you came in, so we could have everything you needed to process the application instead of having to follow back up with you to get those needed documents, and also you having to go out and maybe get those documents from the necessary places that you would need. Our recertification documents, if you are eligible for assistance, please get those documents in as early as possible in the month within they are due. Always feel free to call about what documents you need prior to your agency visits, we can't stress that enough. And also, please, we ask everyone to please be patient. This is a major change that we're going through at our agency. I want to commend our staff, they have been very diligent. You may have seen in our other areas in North Carolina, the food and nutrition program, that there were delays in processing the recertification and application. Gates County did not have that issue. Public individuals do not have to be called due to benefits being delayed. We worked very hard to try and ensure that those who were eligible for those programs continue to go if they were eligible for, and there weren't any delays in that. Because we knew that would affect a lot of people. So I want to commend my staff for that, and thank the public. And here are some resources. We have healthcare resources posted in our agency, local health and dental clinics that receive and see individuals who are underinsured and uninsured. All the federally facilitated marketplace, as you see, website, I think everyone knows by now, it's been heavily communicated in the news, some of the issues there, healthcare.gov, and also the telephone number that can be called. And we spoke previously about federal navigators that are available in the county. We have also disseminated some information to the Gates County Library, we hope to be able to put some on the website in the near future. I want to keep it short, so I want to thank everyone for your support and patience in making this transition for our agency, and if there's any questions, I'll be back to train.
Jeffrey, you gonna be giving any of these presentations around the county to any of the churches or local organizations or anything like that?
We have, I saw on the county health center board, they have a community outreach and enrollment coordinators there, and after an email, majority of the churches, including the know that they are able to come and do presentations on request. So there are two community outreach enrollment coordinators there, Rose Turner's the executive director. If you have an organization that is interested in having a presentation such as this about the Affordable Care Act, they can arrange that with you so you can get that to your organization. We're also in the process of trying to work with the library, putting together some community presentations, some in the days, some after hours, trying to work with everyone's schedule so people can kind of learn about this information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeffrey, I have a question on this slide here, since what we know, the statement is the state of North Carolina chose not to participate in expanding Medicaid.
Yes.
Which means the governor chose not to accept those federally funds.
Yes, probably.
I heard that he did that because in around 2016, there are some costs that are coming, and there's not going to be any funds at that time. Do you know anything in detail about that, or how it's going to affect us?
What we've been told in regards to the funding, based on the Affordable Care Act, for the first three years, it was 100% federally funded.
Right.
And the remaining years, it's 90%, the federal government pays 90%, the state pays 10%. So the information that we saw, and I've been communicating with multiple, is that some of the issues with expanding Medicaid is there were cost overruns at the state. And the governor communicated that, do those cost overruns, expanding the program where they were already budgetary issued, he didn't feel this was the right time to do that. But in regards to the costs, Mr. Owens, we've been told that 100% for the first three years and 90% federally funded, 10% state.
So it was the 10% that he chose not to accept, the 90% because of, the 10% that's going to be unfunded, I guess?
I just never would have said it in the news.
Okay, got you. But just the saying expansion's going to take place?
Not necessarily. That's the states, I think originally in the Affordable Care Act, all states had to expand, and then they amended that to where it was the states could choose whether they wanted to expand Medicaid.
Wow, okay.
So another, something that we've been watching closely, is Virginia hasn't made a choice on that, but it could be, since we do, for Virginia, it could be some individuals that they do decide to expand Medicaid, because some populations choose to move there, and they know that.
And the bottom line to that is that they could have come to DSS and applied, had Medicaid been expanded, but since it's not, then they'll go through the federal marketplace just to see if they qualify there to get a lower rate?
That's right. If it would have expanded, all those individuals would have, if they would have gone to the federally facilitated marketplace, they would have been eligible, so the application would still come to us. But now, since there wasn't an expansion, they'll have to go to the federally facilitated marketplace. And what the act did, I believe, was significantly 180%, 200% of poverty, if we could catch that group, there are actually not eligible for any subsidies. So you could have many people who would actually make more money than them, and the other would associate, but they would not be.
Wow. All right. Any questions? Yes.
Do we share reciprocity with the other states with this act?
Can we share reciprocity with the other states with this act?
Reciprocity if the, for the Affordable Care Act and federal disability?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if an individual has income from, let's say, from the state of Virginia, that works in the state of Virginia, but lives in Gates County, is the income information from Virginia shared with North Carolina so that they have an active figure?
We have, we have systems that we're able to review. Now, all of Virginia employees are on that system. Sometimes we have to.
That is true.
Sometimes we have to take line statement. And sometimes we do have call cases where individuals tell us that they are not working, or they're actually waiting in Virginia where they're working. That's something that says North Carolina has not, you know, has not reached an agreement with its bordering states to find that out.
So there isn't a reciprocity on that?
Um, we are not, we're, there's no reciprocity in regards to employment security commissions on the state to be able to check this way.
Uh, please take your name when you, I think I know your.
I'm sorry.
Doug Bailey?
Doug Bailey. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I hope I was able to answer that for you.
I've forgotten the memory of that as of the morning, but I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anthony Song from Willington Community. I guess it's kind of piggybacking off of what Commissioner Jordan said. You just gave out a whole lot of information.
Yes.
And when we start talking to, just for example, a single mother that has maybe four children and two might be by first husband, whatever. I would suggest, and I know you named out two different groups that will be giving this information out, but I would strongly urge you to be a part of that. If it's a civic group or a church group that will put something together that they can come and explain to. Because sometimes your surrogates can't explain it like you would.
Well.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but these are hot buttons here.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm sure when people start raising questions to some of the groups that you say are available to give them the information out. Sometime you go straight to the, not, I'm not calling you a horse, but straight to the source.
That's fine.
So you can be kind of like hands-on, but I can, I'm like Commissioner Jordan. I can think of maybe a setting of, we tried to pull together as many people we could. Not having you running all over the county. But if I could pull like five churches together of the people and have you come in and your staff to explain this, because it's, it's crucial. And everybody's kind of on edge right now of how the healthcare situation is going to go. And a lot of people have questions about how social services are going to handle it.
Right.
So I would strongly urge you to, as much as you can put your hands in those settings when these meetings come about or setting, that I would strongly urge you to be a part of it.
We will do, we will do our best to always try to serve the community, Mr. Saunders. And some of those appointments that we have with the library, I'm going to do my best to be there. And we're still waiting to hear about some of the appointments with some of the churches, but we'll definitely try to be there as well, too.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for that.
Thank you, Jeff.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Alright.
My name is Dan Baymore, and I've been reading some of this in the paper and everything. And I've noticed that some of the states have a program that they can look at. And they can see that there's people in North Carolina and Virginia that are drawing social services assistance. And in New York and New Jersey, they're also drawing. Now, do we have a way here in Gates County to have access to a program to see that you don't have these double digits like that? Because they are, not only one digit on the, the people's pay tax, it is a double digit. So do you have that, but afforded to you to have a access to a program to check on, see who in our county is drawing assistance and drawing somewhere else?
With our, our programs are federal programs, Mr. Baymore. Our food nutrition services, we have a system that will let us know where the agency's benefits and it goes by month. With our Medicaid, I have to ask, you know, Pan Wester, that's something we can look, and as Mr. Bailey said, have reciprocity with, with other systems. We work out of our, the state of North Carolina EIA system. If we do see that someone has moved from somewhere, we will contact that agency to ensure, to let them know that they apply to our agency. So that is our, that is our checks and balances, as opposed to, as you say, someone not seeing services in, in one state and also in ours.
Alright. Now, second question. I see some people that say that they're on the system, and they're living just as good about an hour. And I know what an hour ain't going to be. And I would think that a person that is living on the system probably wouldn't live as good as a person making a hundred dollars a year. I would think that they would live on something like the twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar a year concept. And the reason I say this is because one of the ladies in my neighborhood told me, the reason she's on the system with her kid, is because if she gets a job, she gets more money from the system than she does with the job, more benefits and stuff. Now, if that's the case, then maybe some rules need to be changing. I know you don't have a thought to make this change, the rule changes. But at the same time, do we have a good program in effect in Gates County? To whereas if a lady has two children, one child, five children, and she is on the system, the children are on the system. They're getting Medicaid or some type of assistance for food stamps and what other, rent and et cetera. And then here's the man that comes up in the house in the evening, and he goes out of the house the next morning. Is his income claimed in that household for social services?
So, Mr. Baymore, we, as you said, with our rules and policies, a lot of our programs are federal policies, are federal programs. We're a state-supervised, county-administered agency. So in regards to the rules and eligibility requirements and eligibility benefits, we strictly adhere to those. We are in compliance with those policies.
Okay. Well, is it legal? I have the.
Mr. Bailey, excuse me, Mr. Bailey. Let us keep it generic.
Okay, these are number questions that really need to be put out in the newspapers.
Well, I, I understand that. But those are questions that are not to the subject of what we're dealing with this morning.
Well, I thought we were talking about the Affordable Care Act and the Medicaid insurance.
Alright, try to wrap it all up, please. I said try to wrap it up.
Okay. Well, my last question is. Is that income of that individual that is living there supposed to be claimed as the household income for what they qualify for in that household?
If it is a household resident, their income is supposed to be counted as.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot of violations.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Alright, Jeff, we appreciate the presentation. And certainly we want to make all of our citizens aware of the changes that's going to affect how healthcare will be implemented in Gates County.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next on our agenda, Mr. Doug Bailey, the ad hoc animal welfare advisor committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I get into my presentation on the information that was provided to you for the newest recommendations from the board. For the public record, I'd like to make a little bit of a historical information available to the public. Back in May of this year, this committee was formed as an advisory committee to the Board of Commissioners. And our task was to look at the current animal control ordinance. To see if there were changes or recommendations that needed to be made to that. And to suggest new recommendations to the board based on our committee meetings. We had nine members on the committee originally. That was a cross-representation of different groups within the committee, within the county. We had a greer on there, which was myself. We had people that were hunters. We had people that were running an animal shelter. And we had animal rights advocates on that committee. So we had a pretty good cross-section. In August of this year, we presented nine recommendations to, I mean, excuse me, eight recommendations to the board for their consideration. First question I wanted to ask about that is what is the status of those original eight recommendations? What have we done with those?
I'm going to defer that to the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bailey, those recommendations have been looked at and are currently under review. And we are looking to look at a holistic and comprehensive things that need to be done. What we did not want to do is, is make piecemeal changes that would potentially be impacted or changed later. We wanted to do it all at once. So that's where we are with that.
Is there a, a rule within the county that there has to be a public referendum before these changes can be made?
Anytime we make changes to ordinances.
Right.
You can have a public hearing.
Right.
I think it's only mandatory if it's a budget ordinance.
Right, okay.
Or some of the other type of, of ordinance related to finances.
The, the reason I mentioned that, Mr. Jordan, was because we did have a public meeting. It was advertised, thank you, Mr. Ryan, within the Gates County Index for a period of over a month. To be held at the Gates County Community Center. We did not have one single member from the public come to that meeting. The only people that were there were people who were animal advocates. And we had some ladies come in from the Elizabeth City Animal Shelter to do a presentation. Very informative, by the way. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we had some idea of what was going on with the recommendations that we had already given before we proceeded with any new ones. I've had comments back from members of the committee that we're not getting any kind of feedback. And I think it's important that we get that feedback. If we're going to proceed with this and continue on with this, then we need to be told what the process is, where we stand with that. What's going to happen next, that type of thing. Because a lot of the people on that committee are feeling like, okay, we've given them our recommendations. And what have they done with them? Okay? And I realize there is a process that it has to go through, but we need that, that feedback on that.
The board, I would ask that, we ask the county manager to provide those recommendations to us probably in December. Or do you need January? I think we need to put that on the, there's a coming.
Chairman, I think we may have sort of time limit on that on committee to the end of the year.
Right, the end of the year. So it has, it should be done.
Probably in January.
In the first part of January. Okay. That being said, let me review with you, if I can, the new recommendations that we're, we have, which are recommendations nine through twelve. Recommendation number nine states that whenever an animal is seized by the animal control officer for cruelty, it shall be taken to a veterinarian contracted by the county for a physical evaluation prior to its being placed in an animal shelter or other facility. If found guilty of cruelty, the owner of such animal shall reimburse the county for the cost of this evaluation. This was recommended to us by the district attorney and by the ADA. As a means for them, when they go into court to try someone for animal cruelty, it's very important that they have a statement from a registered certified veterinarian as to the status of that animal at the time that it was seized. So that when they go into court, they have actual documentation as to the status of that animal at that time. It's very difficult for them to prosecute a case for cruelty when the animal is seized, taken to the animal shelter and kept there for four or five weeks until trial date. In the interim, the animal is getting better, it's getting fed, it's being taken care of, that type of thing. And when you go into court and the judge is asking for evidence of animal cruelty, unless there's been pictures taken and a certification from a veterinarian, that's very difficult for them to do. And so that's a recommendation that they had given to us and that we are putting forward to the board. That's recommendation number nine. Recommendation number ten. If an animal is left unattended and attached to a tether or chain, tether or chain must be attached to a harness instead of a collar to prevent the animal from choking. We've had documented cases that we reviewed from different counties and from agencies within Gates County and Elizabeth City, Quinones County, these type of places. Where animals were left for a period of three, four, five, six days unattended. And wound up choking themselves trying to escape from that tether. Jumping over a fence, wrapping him around a tree, that type of thing. By putting that animal in a harness rather than a collar, that cannot happen. Now, the animal may be able to chew its way out of that harness, but at least it won't get choked. Okay, so that's our recommendation. Recommendation number eleven. That the maximum weight limit for a chain or tether shall not exceed one-eighth of the animal's body weight. This is a recommendation put out by the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty in Animals. And also a recommendation that's been recognized through the U.S. Marine Society. In addition, all tethers must have a swivel at both ends to prevent twisting and tangling. By limiting the weight of tethers and chains, an animal cannot be subjected to chains that are only for making the animal stronger. Such as dogs used in dog fighting. It's a common practice with dog fighting individuals to put an animal on a chain that's very heavy. It tends to build up the muscular, muscles and makes them stronger. But it also is a burden to that animal to have that heavy chain on them. The last recommendation is the size of a permanent animal enclosure. Now, the recommendation that was originally sent to you guys followed the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty Animal Guidelines. And it was, it cannot be any smaller than a hundred and fifty square feet flat measure. So a fifteen by ten type pen for a small animal of less than twenty-five pounds. Or two hundred and fifty feet flat measure for any animal in excess of twenty-five pounds. This is to keep animals from being kept in airline crates or other small pens. Now, since that recommendation has come in to you guys, we have heard back from several members of our committee and different people within the community. And we would like to amend that recommendation to make it a minimum ten, ten by ten square foot size. The reasoning for that is that's a readily available size that you can find anywhere. It does not put an undue burden on, a monetary burden on individuals who have hunting dogs or kennels and would have to upgrade to meet this standard.
So we have a hundred and fifty square foot, that's a hundred square foot?
It's a hundred square foot for minimum for all animals. Now, this, please understand, this is, applies to permanent enclosures. It does not apply to people that put dogs in the back of the truck in an enclosure and take them hunting. Okay?
My question to, to that, and I feel like it needs to be addressed to some degree. I know, I, I was a dog owner, hunting dogs. I put more than one dollar to a pen.
Yes, sir.
I think there's something that needs to be in there, one hundred. Is that one hundred square feet per dog? Is that 100 square feet per dog?
No, sir. No, sir. I mean, and yet, I agree, there needs to be something in there as to the amount of animals you can put within that space.
So you're talking about 10 by 10, I'm hoping $20.
Well, I wouldn't do it.
Well, I'm not going to do it either.
Okay. But I know what you're saying. We need to put a limit.
What I'm saying, that is, I think it needs to be broken down with some type of limit to the number of dogs in a 10 by 10 square.
Okay.
In the 100 square feet.
Right. What we will do then is take that under consideration and table that recommendation. And I will get back in contact with these different groups and let them know that we need to put a number, a maximum amount of dogs that can be kept within that 10 by 10 Because I, I mean, having bred dogs, I know exactly what you're saying.
And I also think that maybe, and maybe I'm asking for too much, but I know some dog owners put their doghouse in that 100 square feet? Or is it on the outside with a hole so the dog can get to that house in the back? Personally, mine, I have a house built behind it, hole in the fence, dogs can go into the house, that type of stuff.
Well, I think.
I'm just throwing something.
I think what we need to clarify, Mr. Jernigan, is what's the definition of a permanent enclosure?
Right.
Okay? And expound on that and then come up with a definition that we can all live with within that. Now, please understand that the original recommendation was the one that the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty in Animals suggests. We've modified that. We've come down from that. Are there any questions from the board on that, on any of that, or from the floor?
Well, I would just say to Mr. Jernigan's comment, as we had discussed earlier, some of these things will be in an ordinance. So therefore, the description has to be something that we say yes or no to eliminate as many gray areas as we can. I am glad to see that you changed that to 10 by 10. Not that I was against the other, but I just think that is shows that you're willing to work with the hunters and the current dog owners. Because we don't want to hinder anybody, but we don't want the animals to be subjected to any cruelty. So I want to recommend, recommend back to the committee, they did a great job on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And.
But we do need to be informed when decisions are made or what the procedure is. There are a lot of people that get very disheartened when they make these recommendations and then don't hear anything back on it.
And one other thing, don't be discouraged about the lack of shedding at that meeting.
Oh, we're not.
We see that. We see that quite a bit. So don't be discouraged about that. They, you know, you're making your recommendations public in the paper and here, so I think you're doing a good job there. One question, Mr. Chairman, is on recommendation number nine, is that supposed to be Pitt Godwin there? Pitt Godwin, right at the end of your.
I'm sorry, yes, it is.
Yes.
Says Mr. Pitts. I'm sorry. Nobody knows who that is.
Okay.
The county attorney.
Right.
That's what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't write this.
Mark?
I'd like to say one other thing.
Yes, sir.
I'm like Jack, I was glad that you'd gone back and changed that size of the pens. I think one of the things that really need to be thought about here in a size of a pen is we have two veterinarian offices here in the county.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know what size pens they have, but I don't want to put something in place where they've got to go back and redo their pens or the hunters have to go back and do their pens by putting in too large of that.
What we're, I think the misconception here is that people are confused by what we're talking about as far as a permanent enclosure versus a temporary enclosure. When an animal is taken to a vet or to an animal shelter, they're put in a pen, but it's not considered by us to be a permanent enclosure. A permanent enclosure is something you would put behind your house to keep your dogs in, that they stay in all the time.
I realize that, but you don't realize, when we sit up here.
Right.
We think about these things that's going to affect our veterinarians.
Right.
Our hunters.
Okay.
And the general public, too.
Right.
And, you know, I know the veterinarians, they take in dogs from time to time when people go on vacation. And it might be a week or two weeks, one month, that the vet is keeping that pet. And I don't want it in too small a pen, me neither.
So we need to think about the length of time that the animal spends in the pen, the size of the pen, how many animals are going to be in it, and when this actual recommendation would apply.
Well, Doug, I think you probably find, I don't know this, but if you stated that veterinarians were subjected to the guidelines, because I'm sure they're overseen by somebody.
Right.
If you put that in there as far as them, that would probably cover you there, because you can supersede that anyway.
Right. Right.
So that might be.
And please understand, ladies and gentlemen, they're already, with the animal ordinance that's in place right now, that was passed back in 2009, there are guidelines for how an animal is to be kept if it's in your house. You know, as far as having a shelter, food, water, you know, that type of thing. So those guidelines are already in place. The only thing that we're trying to do is make them a little bit better, for the benefit of these animals that are, in some cases, treated very cruel. Okay? Not always, but in some cases.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have that on the agenda for the first of the year, January, I believe it is. Next item on our agenda will be our item five, our administrative reports. First report will come from our county manager.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, pleased to present to you this administrative report. I'll detail a couple of things that we're working on, and we're working to implement the shared services agreement and to do things pursuant to that agreement. You'll find an update on page two of the memo regarding where we are with that. We're working very hard on a draft incentives policy for economic development, in-house work on branding through brochures, and continue to work on the website to improve it. We have continued to work on several projects. If you'll turn your attention to pages two and three, you can see those projects enumerated. Santeria Store Phase One is complete. Phase Two has been, being looked at per our conversations regarding performance agreements, and the engineering firm is going to be with you today as well. The historic courthouse project is ongoing, and implementation plan has been submitted to the state historic preservation office. It has been approved with one significant change, and that's the retention and preservation of the jail bars in the second fourth jail area. And that implementation plan is back in our hands, and we have moved forward with receiving bids and estimates on all the work. There isn't an issue with the structural repair work. That bid was rejected. It was higher than the estimate. We have gone back to the architect to find out why. We're evaluating means to bring that portion of the work within the budget. It may be redesign, and may be looking at other firms, but we're actively pursuing that to bring that in the budget. There's been a lot of talk about the historic courthouse, and I wanted for everyone's clarification, this project budgeted in the FLI 14 budget using current monies. There's no debt being issued, there's no loan being taken out. It's essentially to repair, renovate, to keep that facility alive, to keep the water out of it. It's not intended by any way, shape, or form to make it a new facility, but to preserve the historic fabric that we have there. You'll see future asset management activities that we're looking at, talking about with the engineering firm today, and those are enumerated on page three. And you can see those. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this report or any other questions y'all have regarding the administrative apparatus of the county.
The old courthouse structural repair bids, have we gotten any new bids in yet?
We have not. What happened is we had a formal bid process. We had several contractors come in, only one submitted a bid. It was three times higher than the architect's estimate. We threw that bid out, it was being grossly higher than what the estimate was, and attempted to ascertain why it was high and negotiate, see if we could get down closer to what we thought the actual price would be. We have not received anything back. We're in the process of identifying other engineering firms, as well as other contractors with Historic Home Williamsburg Foundation, to see if we can't get that price in line with what we think it should be. The estimate was about $40,000. The bid came back at 120, so it was three times high, and that seems grossly high, and something that we just can't fathom to live with. So we want to refine what's going on there and see if we can't drill down and figure out what needs to be done to get that price where it should be. If there's some problem with the specifications that were bid out, if the manner in which the work was to be performed is too onerous, whatever it calls to get that price that high, we want to try to get it back to a reasonable rate, but a quality rate. What we don't want to do is sacrifice quality for price. There's got to be a meeting of the two so that we have the correct structural repair that is at the acceptable price within budget, but also at the proper quality so that you don't have to encounter this work again. We don't want to rework because that's wasteful, and we don't want to see that happen.
What is the timeline to get a new bid? Where are we looking at?
We hope to have one in November, but I really want to look at some of these other engineering firms to make sure that our methods and means of construction are commensurate with what folks in the tidewater area, eastern North Carolina, are familiar with. I want to make sure that we're not too far out of bounds with what needs to be done there. There's some good local engineers that do structural engineering on the side in Elizabeth City that have worked in Gates County that have a rapport with our building inspector. We're looking at them. We're also looking at some engineers in Norfolk that are more in tune with the coastal plains of Virginia and North Carolina, just to make sure that we're not getting too far out of bounds on this.
I was curious, John, if you recall, was there a one component of the bid that was way out of line?
No, the way we did it with the engineering firm's advice was a lump sum. So we didn't bid a unit price or time and material, and we think that may be one of the issues that caused the escalation. Because in a time and material, whatever it costs is what you pay, so they may have had it a bid somewhat. It's difficult to say. So we're looking at that method and means of the way the bid was done, and it may be that we've tried to alter it from a lump sum to a time and material contract.
All right. All right, thank you. County manager. Our next will be our finance report. Do we have anything? Any?
Yes, sir. Do you have any questions? I'm going to pause this for a second.
Yeah, I don't believe I had any. I did see under one of our expenditures, I think we're about 265% over budget. Let's see if I can find it. I wonder if we're going to have a budget amendment or, as you all were aware, it was our 253% tax part.
Who's line item?
Line item, 114140199.
Profession services.
All right.
Yes, we're working on that. That's the one with the contract for the software things. Yes, we'll have that.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm going to take about 10 minutes, about 10 minutes, recess, just a minute. Minutes. All right, we'll recess. Let's be back in about 11:20. All right, we're going to call a reading back to order. And the next item on our agenda will be our tax report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. You have your tax collector's report, and nothing out of the norm to report. Our collections have increased a little bit as we get closer to the end of the year. We'll call your attention towards the bottom of the page, the amount of funds that have been received through DMV this month. You'll see where they have increased some from last month. Do y'all have any questions in reference to that report?
Under the, it says prior year totals on the current year 2003. If you come down to totals, you may see prior year totals.
Yes.
At the far right, where it says 22,138,18, that's, okay, that's the difference, the change from what was collected from last October to this.
Well, from last month, from September to October.
22,138 was the total, that was the change.
Yes.
All right. Okay, I didn't pick that up. How are we doing with that?
I had Ellis on my mind. We're still doing fine with them. We have no issues whatsoever with, you know, things being taken care of that we send to them. And I think our taxpayers have worked very well, you know, through that process. We did send out a letter to Mr. Ellis, October 16th, and I had no response from that as of yet. So, Mr. Jordan, that may be something that I may want to follow up with.
I think we might report, give them a phone call. Okay.
Any other questions in reference to this report? And also in your packet, you had been emailed this earlier, this was just for your information in reference to the business personal property audits that we are doing. We originally had turned over 46 business accounts to county tax services for audits, and as of right now, 28 of those audits have been completed. We had four of those that were in compliance, 17 have received discovery bills. We have three that are under appeal, and we have four that have just received their notice of discovery, meaning they're still within the 30-day time period that they can appeal if they so choose. And then you have the figures that are below that we had billed today, which at this point we had discovered a little over 2.9 million in value, which has amounted to a little over $20,000 in tax levy and around $7,500 in penalties.
Is this a new, is this something fairly new that you're doing?
No, we had done this a number of years ago with the same firm, and it was just kind of time to revisit it and go back to.
We did use an outside auditor?
Yes.
Okay.
Going every seven years, six, five, four?
We really do not have a timeframe, you know, as to how often we did it. The first time we did this, it's probably been five or six years ago. What we opted to do at that point was to audit all businesses with a tax value of over $50,000. This time, what we did was go with businesses that were between $25,000 and $100,000 is what we kind of based it on. And also, some of our other businesses, such as our cell phone companies, that sort of thing, if this company is doing an audit through a novotating on this firm, and we have some with them as well, we have opted to go in with that for them to go ahead and audit ours as well while they're working with that company.
And the audit is simply just on a business's, what I call a motive, or anything that can be moved?
Yes.
Not on the structure?
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, you also have four requests for refunds. The first one that you have is with a mortgage company. The first one that you have is with a mortgage company. This is a mortgage company where we had two accounts. One was in the son's name, which was a junior, the other was in the father's name, which was senior, and the mortgage company actually paid on juniors, but that was not what they wanted to pay on. What they intended to pay on was seniors. And so this is basically the overpayment, what they, what they had paid that needs to be refunded to them.
Where's the tax go? GO one, FO one, FO two?
The GO one is just our general county taxes. The FO one is the fifty-dollar fire fee, and the FO two, I'm sorry, the FO one is the forty-dollar fire fee, and the FO two is the fifty-dollar fire fee. And the reason there were two fire fees on this particular piece is the seniors' single wide mobile home is on juniors' property. And it was that single wide mobile home that the mortgage company intended to pay on, but they paid on juniors' entire property instead. I heard that makes sense, because it was very confusing to us for a little while.
And those, the dollar amounts on those fire fees were?
The, anything that the structure is valued under fifty thousand dollars is forty dollars. That's a residential structure. Anything that's valued over fifty thousand is fifty dollars. A multifamily dwelling is sixty, and then commercial properties are seventy-five. And those were the top figures that were set by the, by legislation. Some of those back will put that in place.
Every county? Is that what?
Not every county, no. This is special legislation for Gates County. Most of your counties that you find have a fire tax, not a fire fee, which is another whole animal. Okay, the next request for refund is a lady had gone on the online system to pay, and as she said, she hit the button twice, and so it paid twice. So she would like one of those payments back. And then the other two you have are strictly due to the business personal property audit. When we do these audits, we start out by auditing the current year and two prior years, and if we find anything significant in that timeframe, we will go back for the full five previous years. And every now and then, we do have a situation where the taxpayer has listed something that they shouldn't have, that gives them a credit. And so both of these are refunds to that regard, however, they will be applied against their total discovery deal.
All right. We have it for you, the request for refunds. What is the pleasure to award?
Make a motion that they be approved.
Second. All right, motion second, that the refunds be approved. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Okay. Do you have other questions? I thank you.
Listen, Commissioner, may I ask one question if you can order? Can I? I'm a little confused. Why was, you made a statement, only Gates County was doing it this way? Is there any particular reason why, or just our county?
Well, we had to seek special legislation for that, and I believe the reason at the time the county chose to do that is with the fire tax, that tax would be assessed on everything that you owned, even to your motor vehicles, and it would be by fire districts. And it would have been a lot more involved with the county to have set that up for that type of billing, and it would have more likely been more costly to the taxpayer, because that fire tax would have been applied to everything that you own. Whereas right now, the only properties that we have in the county that this fire fee is applied to is your residence or your business. It's not applied to your land, it's not applied to your personal properties, such as your motor vehicles, or boats, farm equipment, that sort of thing. And if it was a fire tax, it would be applied to all of that. Did that answer your question? Kind of.
All right.
Ah, yes, I'm not sure. I come to y'all as we're talking.
Okay, okay, you know where I am. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I, Guinness, next item is our personnel reports. If you have no questions. Then our departmental report. First one is our emergency management. I do have one question, really.
Yes, sir.
Under upcoming, you said reviewing need for nine-one-one supervisor. What shifts are we talking about, and how many employees are we talking about?
It will be one employee, and it will be, it hasn't, I think it's needed, but they would float shifts to do training and observations with boat ships. So they would, they would split the shift, that makes, you know, wouldn't be a necessary nine-to-five position.
And it sounds like that it would be used for train, somewhat training of an officer?
Training, oversight, and administration. And there's, there's some, as we've discussed in the past, there is some legislation forthcoming that's going to mandate two people, and this will prepare us for that transition.
All right. My next is inspection department, and water department. Oh, yeah, that's it. Correspondence and articles of interest, county calendar. All right, there are no other items discussed. We'll look at our public hearing, item six, and we have two public hearings scheduled from our GITS. First will be the Community Transportation Program Grant. Please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right.
I look forward today to present FY fourteen, fifteen, Community Transportation Grant. This is a grant that covers out administrative costs, and the costs that are covered in this grant are the two administrative positions, and the benefits, the vehicle insurance, the rent, and the utility, audit costs, legal costs, supplies, et cetera. Also, the capital grant. The capital grant this year covers for the replacement of rebuilt buildings that have met their life expectancy, and a generator to allow the building to be operative when there's no electricity. Also, there are two operating grants attached. One, the first one is for enhanced medical transportation, a little enhanced emergency transportation. That grant is a little more costly than other grants that we asked to apply for before.
All right, we want to do one of them at a time, and then we'll, then after the hearing, then we can come back. All right, anything else you want to make us aware of with the CTPG grant, Community Transportation Program Grant? Okay. All right, we need a motion to go into public hearing. So moved?
Second.
All right, so motion second, if we go into public hearing. The Community Transportation Program Grant supports our GITS program for transportation to the elderly and those who qualify for what it services. We have it before you today. Are there any public comments on the county accepting this grant? All right, here, none. We will, again, motion to come out of public hearing. So moved?
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next. All right, we have this grant in force. What is the pleasure of the board? Are there any discussions?
Patrice, could you just state for us, the, this first grant looks like the total project is three, three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars? Am I seeing the right page?
That's for, also includes the operating grant that we're talking about.
What's the total for that?
The total for this, the Community Transportation will be two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Federal grant? Chairman, do you have anything else?
What is the county's input, what is the county's input position? Is there county input to this grant?
Um, yes, the, it's fifteen percent.
Fifteen?
Well, fifteen percent match on the administrative portion, and ten percent on the capital.
Money?
Capital.
Capital. All right. What is the pleasure of the board to adopt, accept this grant, receive this grant? All right.
Make a motion to approve, apply for the grant.
Second.
All right, motion second, that we approve the application of this grant. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
The next grant is for one of the TTAP reduced transportation assistance programs, and this one is to enhance mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. This is the program that I was talking about, is to offer enhanced transportation service. Right now, we are a community transportation system, a public transportation system, we're not a medical transport. So while we have contracts for medical transportation, they go along with everybody else, people to work wherever. Sometimes that takes a little longer. It makes it, I guess, not as easy to use for some individuals who have additional needs. This is, our usual transportation is provided through curb-to-curb service, but because of the nature of the county, you do pull in people's yards and different things. This transportation service would be a through-door service. It would allow a person needing assistance, we tell people that if they need assistance, they need to bring someone with them, but there are people in the county that don't have anybody to bring with them. The service is, when we pull up to the, to the provider, then it's the person's responsibility to be able to get to their appointment after we get them out of the door. Except for clients that are in a wheelchair, and we will push them to the door, but that is. This service will allow for an aide to be on the vehicle with the, with the people, and to go in to help, in their homes, to help them outside, to get on the vehicles, to be with them on the vehicles as needed, and to get them inside of the appointment site. Now, it won't take them back in the appointment site with them. Once they give them to that medical provider or whatever, then that would be, the aide would be waiting for the person. This service is a fifty-fifty match. Fifty percent of it will come from the federal government. The additional fifty percent, we use the match funds from the road fund, the other transportation system, from the fares that we charge Medicaid, and the fares that we charge homeless community blockhead rent, and some fares if people don't have funding for us to use. This is addressing one of the needs in our locally coordinated plan to provide enhanced medical transportation service. We started looking at this service because the Department of Social Services has a responsibility to find, to their client, if they are wherever, and say they're in a hospital, and they get out of the hospital, and they say that they don't have anybody to come get them, the social services has to find them right back. It's their requirement. So in some instances, it takes away the social, the social worker may have to go pick them up, or different things of that sort. Also, there are people who have, who need to go in, like for surgery, and if you pick them up after surgery. Well, there are some hospitals that send a taxi to take them back home, but there are some hospitals that won't release them unless someone comes to pick them up, that is not like a public transportation person. Because this service would also address those needs. And it would address needs for just the general public who had, who had needs for someone to assist them, and provide, and get them to their medical.
I take it we never had this one before?
Yeah.
All right. We need a motion to go into public hearing. So moved?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, we're in public hearing to hear citizens' comments regarding the public project, I'm sorry, the transportation grant that enhances mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities. Are there any comments?
With the chairman, in hearing the reasons for this grant, and have lived in a county, oh, I'm sorry, Anthony Songers, lived in the county all my life, I do know of situations where there were people who were, needed assistance to get to the vehicle, back to the, so my comment is, I think it's a great idea, and anything the board can do to assist the GITS program, I'm all in favor for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we need a motion to come out of public hearing. So moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next. All right, we have the force this grant, and obviously, it's for a good service, and even better, the county doesn't have to look like, the county's not going to have to put anything in it, based on the match funds from roof and, and the fares taking up the other part. Any discussions on it?
I think it's a great idea, and something that's just for, oh, needed.
One comment on it is, and a lot of, a lot of these families don't need a spouse or someone that's earning income in the house, have to take a day off of work, or half day off of work to get somebody to the doctor, so certainly helps the economic outcome of family. It's a good thing.
All right, we'll then add a motion.
I make a motion to apply for this grant.
Second. All right, the motion second, that we apply, approve authorization for applying for this grant. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right.
Okay. The next grant, the reason that we added this grant after the original one had came out, this was a grant that we originally came to you a couple months ago to add, because it stated access to apply for original funds. Well, this year, after we were, I guess, after the furlough, they came back and then they started putting out contracts. They stated that instead of the two-year grants that we were applying for, they're going to give us one-year grant. So we're through half of the year, we hadn't started the program, so I wanted to reapply for this program. And it was the program that we were allowing people to get to the services earlier. I think like in, for instance, Suffolk, we go over through at like six-thirty in the morning, we don't get back over there until ten. This would allow some of the people to get to the appointments earlier.
Excuse me, Patrice, for interrupting, but do we have copies of this grant?
Yes.
What the funds are?
Yes.
What about, it's not only a benefit?
It's the same, it's also part of the TTAP.
Oh, it's part of the TTAP, okay.
This is through a jarred service in the oven with a dryer, net, or a dome.
Okay, that's good. All right.
It's also a fifty-fifty grant, and fifty percent of the grant will come from the federal government. The other fifty comes from, some of the roads, comes from some of the contracts that we have, like boat we have, Avon Commission has a program that is brick fourth investment act, different funding sources for that, and pay.
So really, it's the same grant we had for two years, but it was?
Well, it's a grant that, yeah, we started this year, but it'll be this year. Well, it's a grant that, yeah, we started this year, but it'll be this year.
All right. It's under TTA?
Yes.
All right, well, we, it appears that we've already had the public hearing for the TTA grant. And you were later explaining the second part, but we will allow any public comments if there are any in regards to the second part of the TTA grant. If there are no comments, then, um, we can... I mean, we can, you really don't, we went into public hearing for the TTA grant, which is, this is a part of it, which you explained the second part. A little belated, I guess I should have caught that, but I don't see the need to go into the public hearing again formally, so... But the second part, we will take a motion, a hearing motion to accept the second part of the TTA, which is the JRC and New Freedom Program.
I believe we accept that as well?
Second.
All right, so motion second, that we accept the second part of the TTA grant, which is the JRC and New Freedom Program. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, next. Thank you, ladies. All right, the next item would be our whole business, none, and our new business. The first item on our new business would be to appoint our Ure District County Commissioner to replace Commissioner Horrell. So we have, uh, now, correct the court, she's not gonna finish, Bill.
I think it would be administered at one o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, I guess we need a recess until one o'clock.
They don't need to approve it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's right. Thank you, Ms. Horrell. All right, you have the, before you, uh, the recommendation from the Democratic Party, uh, for Commissioner of the Ure District, and the name of Mr. Billy Felton has been recommended. I'm gonna put you in before we even vote on it. So are there any discussions or on the recommendation that's come to the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I would like to commend the Democratic Committee for the service that they rendered in this, in this issue, the professionalism that was presented in the process, the way that it was made very public and very open, and, uh, and just thank them for everything that they did. And I believe that we heard clearly from your community on what their thoughts were.
I do think you did a good job and, um, got a placement that's recommended and I, you know, we can never replace Commissioner Horrell, Commissioner Horrell, but certainly made, uh, I think his recommendation as well. So having said that, any other comments before we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
I was just gonna make a motion.
All right, that's fine.
I make a motion that we approve Billy Felton as, uh, Ure Commissioner.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, next. Welcome to the board, Billy. All right. Uh, we will have the swearing-in before you can take your seat. You need, do need to take the oath of office and that is scheduled for one o'clock. And, um, the next item on our agenda is the appointment of the registered deeds. Basically, the general statute states that, uh, the candidate that's, uh, recommended is the candidate that must be appointed. And, uh, so it would really basically just to acknowledge the receipt of the appointment and to, uh, approve that as presented. So we would ask the board if you would, uh, provide a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the candidate for registered deed and that a candidate implemented, uh, as provided by the general statute.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I move that we accept the receipt of the candidate for registered deeds as sent to us.
Second motion.
All right, so the motion is second, um, that we acknowledge and receive and appoint as provided, uh, Kathy Horton. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, next. All right, she's not here, but...
She's at work.
She's at work. Congratulations, now. All right. Again, the swearing-in is scheduled for one P.M. The next item on our agenda is comments from our citizens, if you have any.
I just, are these comments, could it be anything?
Well, you should sign up, but if you're gonna have some, you need to come to the podium. We'll allow you to make comment.
You will?
Yes, come to the podium, please.
James Miller from Ure. I just, uh, I know the manager said something earlier about the restoration of the old courthouse. And I was, did he say he was looking at tearing out the old jails? Did you say that?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is that, why would the old jails be...
They're converted into office space, so it'd be usable space for the county.
I thought the, you said historically being restored, but so the old jails wouldn't be part of it?
That they're to be saved. We took it to the state historic preservation office. We have to save those elements so that they can be turned into some sort of historic or interpretive display at some point in the future.
But, but being in, in position in the old courthouse is not part of the plan?
No, not at this time, no, sir.
And the asphalt shingle roof on there now, is that a temporary or is that?
No, that is a permanent shingle roof.
So it won't be historically restored is what you're saying? I mean, you won't, you won't have a metal roof like it was, you won't have the jails. So that's just my question.
Yeah, the process is that whatever changes we make, that we have to go through the preservation, uh, not, well, preservation society, or historic building, and they approve or disapprove that type of repair. They have allowed the shingles, uh, the ultimate use of shingles versus the, uh, the old slate or metal, whatever was up there, and also the taking out of the jail with the provision that they're saved. So they still consider it historic, uh, with the modifications that they offer us.
Okay? Thanks.
All right, thank you.
And I could make a point. And the courthouse there, there were many additions to the courthouse over the years, and the roof had different types of materials on it. So that's why the Department of Cultural Resources and the Archives and Preservation said that we could go to the asphalt.
All right, thank you.
Don, you say that, you know, the jail cells will be, will be removed, we just got to save them?
That's correct, yes, sir. We took it out to the state historic preservation office, ship of, is what they call it, and the jail cells have to be retained. We can't scrap them, we gotta save them for future generations to be able to have. It would be nice to have an interpretive historic display. I'm not sure how that's gonna work. Displays are not my forte. We're gonna have to get someone, perhaps the historic society, to figure out how to display all of these elements moving forward.
I, myself, am not really for removing them out of that building. I'd like to see them left exactly where they're at to be displayed in, in the context that they are actually in today.
I think a possible, when I, when I read that in the minutes, I think, um, I think an alternative, something that came by my mind is maybe in the hallway or something, leading to where that office is, you would have the door just passing to the wall so they can see what the lock was like and what the bars were actually like is, is the alternative that I got. Keeping the jail like it, like it is, being able to, to see that and visualizing the reality of a prisoner actually being back there is pretty, is a pretty unique thing. So I understand what Kenny said, because I had wondered it the same, what they might do.
I, I certainly feel like with the addition of the, um, prison department that we obtained, that we can find enough office space without destroying that aspect of that courthouse. And, and I'm totally against tearing out those jail cells and stuff, just to, to store them somewhere. That, that doesn't make, to me, that does not make good sense.
Um, you know, I'm kinda with Commissioner Jernigan on this one. You know, as I have taken classes through there and we have done tours of the courthouse, that has always been a major area of interest for people coming in to see how it was, uh, and what the conditions were to the jail. But we'll have to see what we can do. It would, maybe it would be possible. I'm hoping it'll be possible to keep them where they are.
Work out the salt cost was associated with that, taking those out.
It's really part of a change order that has yet to be processed, primarily because it was changing the implementation plan. So we, we don't have a cost, to be frank with you.
Yeah, but, uh, since it hasn't happened, and I agree basically with, uh, with Mr. Horrell and Jernigan, and we can say that we probably would wanna do that, so having said that, uh, we'd like you to carry that out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that those cells be left as they are today, even, even no painting in there. The people that go in there to see those jails and how those jail inmates lived at that time, I'm sorry, that, that is history that needs to stay just like it is. It, it is a very, when you go in there, if that don't get your attention, ain't nothing in that building to get your attention.
But it's, it's for...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Would I feel like...
Uh, yes, you can come to the podium.
Sure, please, please. I applaud what they're saying right now. Once you take something out and put it in storage, that's the end of it.
It is nothing, it is nothing but scrap metal from that one.
It's scrap once you tear something apart, it's historic. And that building some years ago was turned over to Historic Society, and I really thought that they had, you know, pretty much in charge of that night. Office space, what do we need office space for now?
Well, some is gonna be used, uh, for public, like Chamber of Commerce, um, may have some ready metal space there.
Because I've, I've heard some talk of the kind of managing room and all that, bulletproof deck, glass, electronic stuff, electric internet, you know, that, that might be all you're saying, but I just, you know. And that's the only comment I have right now, but I would applaud what they're saying. You may, you stop tearing something apart and put it in storage. All of us know we put in storage home, you know. It's pretty much in that when you put it in storage. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have a motion, have a motion on the board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just leave it as is and...
Can you, would track your motion just long enough to, let's get some more comments on this if you would?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to do that.
All right, thank you. Yes, if you'll come to the podium, please, identify yourself, please.
Uh, yes. But, um, and I don't take this with me, I'm here at L.A.C., Ure. There's a wall in the courthouse on the second floor that has signature or V.I. I would like for y'all to also consider leaving that as is, because it dates back to like about eighteen fifty-six, kind of period.
I don't think, you know, there are plans to, to, uh, deal with that or even to...
If I could, Mr. Chairman, to give a little history and background on this, in the budget preparations for FY fourteen, we had the option of budgeting current monies for continuing with the project and trying to raise three million dollars through tax credits and a combination of other spending. So what we did is, knowing that we've received grants from agencies already, from the Rural Center to the Goldley Fund, and that the Rural Center is no longer what it once was, and seeing all that take place with the state budget, we appropriated monies, current monies, without the use of debt, an outline, a rough outline of what would occur in the building and which locations. It was made part of the budget, it's sort of the rough outline. There's been a Historic Courthouse Committee that's met, and what we had to do is, we knew we had to go to the Historic Preservation Office to get all kinds of approvals, um, some of which were blanket, some of which were immediate. The roofing was an immediate need because it was leaking in the vicinity of the signatures and the, I don't know my room names that well.
Patriots.
It's the room across from the town.
It's the Patriots, right?
The Patriots, yeah. So that's what initiated the roof fix. And then we took that whole plan, because we knew we had to address all of these areas. What we're trying to do with the plan is keep everything the same where we can, meaning the upper two rooms would be kept the same except for the structural repair. And we had to do demolition to remove hidden defects for the structural engineer to be sure of what he was designing and to make sure that that bid was being bid as to what could be seen and not covered up. It's the thought process that the defects are not observable and you can't put them in the bid, it'd be the first change order out the gate for any contractor. So we tried to remove all hidden work so everybody could see it. The implementation plan covers the whole building, but really the work and any changes takes it all back to what it used to be with the central hallway, the clerk of courts office on one side, the registered deeds on the other side, with new doors and appropriate functions, all the bookshelves are removed. So it really takes the building back to what it was, and there are a host of uses for the building that have been planned and looked at, Chamber of Commerce, Historic Society, display area for a gallery of gates, a lobby space, so on and so forth. There's no bulletproofing scheduled for that area. We are looking at security upgrades countywide, school system wide, in light of societal changes that are taking place. That, that's a separate issue, I'd be happy to address it. But with the Historic Courthouse, the WPA addition is solid and hadn't had a historic impact. The reason staff looked at removing the jail bars is because we were under the impression or the understanding that there was a history there that was not, not fully shared by everyone in the community, that there was some elements of divisiveness about what occurred in the jail and some of the court cases that occurred in the past that caused some folks to give them pause. So that, that's really the direction that we were moving with that, knowing that someone other than staff would have to interpret that history in a way that was sensitive to all of those demographics and all those different things that occurred in the past, all of which I'm not aware of. I've been made aware in a roundabout way. I, I wasn't here for it and I made to understand that some of it was unfortunate and, and, and just a sign of the times of the era in which they occurred. So that, that's really what happened with the jail, to try to make it interpretive for everyone and to do it in a way that would be not divisive, but interpretive is the only word I can describe. The rest of the implementation plan foresaw the, the need to keep that historic courtroom as a courtroom, because it's always been one, and to open it up for community use, potentially for the planning board, the board commissioners. uh, potentially for the planning board, the board commissioners, it's a good meeting room, it's historically been, uh, the courthouse, and has the ability for the public to use it, uh, moving forward. Uh, the chairs and the stanchions aren't as nice as these chairs, uh, but it is very historic, it has very good sound quality, um, the HVAC in the whole building is in pretty good shape, the electrical's in pretty good shape, the amount of money required to bring it up to what it needs to be, uh, can be current monies, uh, so you're not looking at all new everything, uh, a lot of things, toilets just need to be reworked, paint needs to be applied, caulking needs to be done, uh, basic, I'm gonna use a, a management phrase, it's called O and M, operations and maintenance, just need to maintain the thing, uh, and that's really, uh, what the monies in this budget were designed to do, is to get it to a place of maintainability, recognizing that we don't have three million to spend on it, that some future generation, some future board would have all the elements there maintained, they could make decisions fifty years from now, when money's better, times are, are better, our uses change, and, and, and people have a, a idea of what they might want to do with it, but that if it stays or continues in its current condition, that option and that choice for future generations is effectively removed, uh, so that's really the whole mindset is maintainability, uh, and I'll give you a, a good, for instance, that is problematic and it needs to be addressed, are downspouts, uh, water hitting the building is not a good scenario, the building needs to have the downspouts repaired, uh, little things like that add up over time, toilets need to be fixed, maintenance, operations and maintenance, so that's where we are with that.
All right, and I, I think that, you know, the, the board has, has spoken, there's some elements of a change that, um, the board's concerned about, and, uh, we need to look to you to, to recognize and make those changes, um, you know, and I think we need to be kept abreast of, of any changes that, that really may, uh, have some public interest, uh, you know, we look at the specifications, and a lot of times we don't see everything, uh, the change is gonna, gonna be made, but I think we need to be kept abreast of just what's going on, uh, and, and some detail, and we can also give some evaluation input along with the Old Courthouse Committee.
May I just say one thing, you know, the, the history, and the past is past, but one purpose of history is to learn from our history so that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past, and certainly everything that happened in courthouse over the years, you know, there were instances where there were probably injustices done, but I think we need to move forward and recognize those effects, but that does not negate that, uh, how it was at that particular time, we're looking at it from twenty-first century eyes, um, but we can learn lessons to teach our younger citizens and our older citizens about how it was.
Just to teach history when you have something visual to show what it really was, I, I agree. I hope Ms. Ms. Horr will take back what she's hearing from the public and from the, from the board, uh, what feelings you might have gained with the jail cell is concerned.
And since, since that is, uh, was in the specs to the roof of jail cell, Commissioner Jernigan, I think we need to move forward on your motion.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion to save our jail cell and the old courthouse as it is today, now, at a later date, if the walls were to need painting, certainly I would not be against that, as long as they are put back at the same color they are today to match the historic aspect of that building and the jail cells.
All right, we have a motion on the board?
Second.
Motion's second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Make those changes. All right, uh, next item on our agenda would be, uh, Commissioner comments. Mr. Horr, you want to start today?
I'll start today. Welcome Billy, we look forward to working with you as a team, and, um, you do have some big shoes to, to follow behind, we're not a music word field, but to follow behind, but again, we're, uh, delighted for you to come and represent, represent the whole county, but we're, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone that has come today and had comments and said, said how they feel about different things, um, I'm glad to see Billy out there, and I look forward to seeing him on this end of the table, uh, they put me in Mr. Horr's chair, I cannot feel his shoes either, but I will sit here and do what I can for what's the best, what I think is the best for this county and our citizens, thank you.
I too, like, we welcome Billy to the board, uh, we've had a good chemistry in the past, and I'm sure that, that will continue, we don't always agree on everything, but we are respectful for each other, and I'm sure that you will continue along those lines. It's nice to see Mrs. Horr here today, um, we certainly, uh, please, she is able to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Horr, I'm honored. I too thank everyone for coming today, uh, to be here and witness, uh, the transactions of this county, uh, I do recognize Ms. Horr, uh, glad to see you, uh, and I do want to acknowledge again the great service that Johnny has provided for this county, and to thank you, Mr. Horr, for sharing him, because I know that, uh, many times when I, I get home, my wife says, okay, you're finally here, you've been having this long a day today, and, uh, but, uh, we thank you for, for all that you've done to help support him and what he's done for the county, and, uh, Billy, I certainly welcome you, and we look forward to you, uh, helping us to move forward in the things that has already been established, and also the new things that we'll be doing. So having said that, uh, again, we thank everyone, and we're gonna, uh, have a motion, we're gonna recess, but we need a, we need a motion to go into closed session, and, uh, what are we gonna do, eat lunch, or we're gonna go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, the schedule is you've got the engineers here to meet with you in closed session, uh, lunch and swearing in is scheduled at one o'clock, swearing in open to the public, um, and to the families of those being sworn, the clerk of court will do the swearing in, and then we will, uh, have lunch available for the elected officials, uh, today.
All right, so we'll do closed session, uh, engineers come out of closed session, uh, do the swearing in, then go back and eat lunch, then go back into closed session?
If need be, yes sir.
Okay.
Can we, can we tell the public swearing in is gonna be here in this room?
It will be, yes sir, and it'll be conducted by the clerk of court.
At one AM?
At one AM.
All right, we need a motion to go into closed session?
Sub move.
Second. All right, motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, we're gonna take a break for about five minutes, and then we'll come back into closed session. Okay. All right, we, we need a motion to come out of closed session?
Sub move.
Second.
All right, motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, we're out of closed session, uh, the new business, we had scheduled for one o'clock, uh, the first item would be to appoint, uh, the year district commissioner to play, replace Commissioner Horr, and at this time, we're gonna ask, uh, our clerk of court and Mr. Belton, Commissioner Belton, if you'll come forward, uh, we do recognize his wife is here, Ms. Belton, and, uh... Make sure he puts his left hand on the mic. You wanna hold the mic, man?
I burned the whole crowd.
There's a little bit of love in the mouth, and there's a lot, and just repeat after me. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the Constitution.
And the Constitution and laws of the Constitution.
Not inconsistent, there will.
Not inconsistent, there will.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As the express commission.
As the express commission.
So help me God.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And I'd like to thank the Democratic Executive Board for placing my name in nomination, and the board commissioners for showing that support and, and accepting that nomination, all the people here, uh, the sniper, every bit of the fortune given me, the calls to right the county, they've been very humorous, and I appreciate all of that support, and I promise y'all I'll do the very best I can to make it kind of continue to be the best place in the world to live.
Amen.
Hi, hi, Mary C. Horr, you solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support and maintain, and maintain. The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of law, of law.
Of law.
Not inconsistent, there will.
Not inconsistent, there will.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
And that should be.
As registered deeds.
Against him.
Against him.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Lord.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
So the court will work.
stayed and, and, uh, witnessed this great occasion, uh, we're, it's a lot of joy, but it's also a lot of sitting there as well, we're glad to have, um, this very horror here with us, and, uh, we just look forward to moving forward and doing the great job that, uh, this board has been doing in the past, so having said that, uh, we'll need a motion to recess.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, motion's second, we'll recess, uh, to, after lunch, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Thank you all. All right, I'll go call our commissioner, leaving back in order, and we'll need a motion to go back into closed session?
Sub move.
Second.
All right, motion's second, we'll go back into closed session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, we're in closed session. Okay, we, uh, call for a motion to come out of closed session?
Sub move.
Second.
All right, so motion's second, we'll come out of closed session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, uh, we have five items we need to address, um, in going forward, we need a motion to authorize the county manager to acquire the services of the injured, part discussed in closed session.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, the motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Uh, next, we need a motion, uh, to approve the classification of registered deeds paid, uh, as a level twenty-four step two, you know, as discussed in closed session?
Sub move.
Second.
Second, all right, all right, motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Uh, the third item, uh, we need a motion to acknowledge the county manager's recognition, uh, of a pay change for a DSS employee, and the board, uh, acknowledge that this off, that this pay, uh, has been authorized in the, in the budget.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Uh, item four, we need to, a motion to authorize the establishment of a, a court supervisor at the level discussed in closed session.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, so motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, the last item, uh, we need a motion for regular county managers to set up a meeting, uh, with the employee, uh, to meet the fifteen day, uh, limit in the personnel ordinance as discussed in closed session.
Sub move.
Second.
All right, so motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, uh, that concludes the business that we, we needed to discuss, uh, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second.
Uh, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna recess until our November the eighteenth night, uh, night being, Billy, you'll take the vote.
Sub, sub move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right.